Welcome to this episode of the Route 281 Podcast. Today's guest is Somerset County Commissioner Irvin Kimmel. We're thankful to spend some time with Irv today to get to know him a little bit better. And to get to know a little bit more about the Somerset County Government. We thank you for checking out this episode. We hope you enjoy. Don't forget to hit the like and subscribe button. I just have to look over once in a while, make sure that's still going. My first episode, my computer went to sleep on me. So Bill's, Bill's video cuts out a little bit. So I'm learning. I had to change the setting on the computer. Yeah, so just you can adjust that up fairly close. It picks up pretty good, but.
About that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you can hear yourself. That's whatever, that's what the audio is hearing. Okay. Yeah. Anyway. Irv Kimmel, thanks for being here, dude.
Thanks for inviting me, Tim.
Yep, alright. Alright, everybody gets an introduction. And you can tell me if I got all this right. Irv Kimmel, Somerset County Commissioner. He's a husband, father, Christian, foreign exchange student host.
Two times.
Two times.
Second one.
Second one. Beef farmer. And as I said, county commissioner on a Republican ticket, right?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah. You enjoying it?
Days.
Really?
Certain days, yeah.
Yeah, is it what you thought it would be?
For the most part, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, for the most part.
Now, had you had you talked to somebody who was commissioner before, before you're like, you know, throwing your hat in that ring or what?
Yeah, I spoke to some former commissioners, you know, and I grew up, I went to school with one with a gentleman and his dad was commissioner for a long time, so kind of talked to him about it too.
Yeah. And you're like, you know what, let's go for it. No, so you were a school board president at Rockwood for how many years?
Six years.
Six years?
Yeah, I was on the board for 12, but I was president for six.
Wow, that's a long time.
It is a long time.
So, most people on that long? And then explain to me how they run there, like.
Every four years.
Okay, so you can get reelected?
Yeah, uh, you know, that's, that's a non-paying position, you know.
Sure, yeah, that's just serving the community.
Yeah, it's just being a public servant.
Well, you're, you're there for your kids. I understand.
Well, you gotta be there for all the kids, not just your own. And, and that's something that a lot of people don't do. They go in there for an agenda for their own kids and that's it.
Yeah.
You gotta take into consideration everyone from A to Z.
Right.
So.
Yeah, which makes sense.
But no, the nor- the normal terms are two terms on school board, usually.
And my wife's dad served a long time.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, that's, I mean, that's cool.
I enjoyed that. I, I really did. I enjoyed being on the board in the school.
What's the responsibility of the school board president?
Well,
as opposed to just being on the board?
You know, the president, you know, runs all the meetings. Puts the agendas together with, you know, either the secretary or the superintendent. And kind of mediates between the board and superintendent of, you know, if there needs to be a decision, a consensus decision for the superintendent to make before the next meeting.
Do you find that most community members are in tune with what's going on at the school board meetings?
Um,
And
probably fifty percent, I'd say. Unless there's trouble, you know, if there's trouble, then everybody's harping on you, but if everything's running smooth, you know, which I got on at the end of, I don't know what year it was, but it was right after our school district went through the the fur- not the furloughs, but the, uh, almost bankruptcy, you know, kind of, um, you know, I got on right at the end of that. So, and, and right after we closed Kingwood School, I got on. So there was still a little bit of turmoil with the community.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, to incorporate into Kingwood School, which is located along Route 281.
Yeah, just down from your house here.
Yeah. Um, don't tell people where I live, I'm just kidding. Uh, speaking of Route 281, so everybody gets a gift. So
Well, thank you.
You're the third person running around Somerset County now with that hat.
Well, I didn't bring anything, but I will.
No, you're, you're good. I, um, so when somebody asks you where you got the hat, you can let them know.
I'll wear it.
Youtube doc, I'm checking out. Um, yeah, so you're, uh, you're in good company there with Joe and Bill.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Um, yeah, Kingwood closed, I know a lot. You know, everybody came from Kingwood over to Rockwood.
Correct.
So, which I heard Kingwood food was phenomenal.
That's what they say.
Yeah.
That's what everybody said.
You know what? And the Votec food, I'll say, was right up there with, uh, I went to Votec. They had great food, but they had a culinary department, so I think some of the kids had a hand in that, so.
Yeah, I, I never went to Votec, I was in the ag, so.
So, yeah, so on that note, you talk a little bit about how you grew up in Somerset County. You, you were at Somerset High School?
Yes, I graduated from Somerset.
Born and raised in Somerset County, right?
Born and raised in Somerset County. You know, owned a dairy farm my entire life. You know, when sold the cows, I started driving truck. You know, I drove truck for twenty twenty-three years before I got this job.
What kind of trucking did you do?
Uh, heavy hauling and tanker, flatbed, van trailer, whatever.
Cross-country or local?
Yeah, for about uh, probably twelve years I was over the road.
Yeah. Yeah, I knew you were doing that.
So when my kid was real little, I was still on the road. And when my oldest one turned probably six, I got a local job and just hold heavy equipment here locally.
It's good to be home whenever they're young. And you're involved, you coached.
I coached youth football for a long time. I, uh, ref West Penn soccer, I ref PIAA football. Yeah, I was president of the youth football organization we have here.
Yeah. Um, the boys co-opted, uh, to play football for Berlin, correct?
Correct. Started in two thousand fifteen. I was part of that initial talk.
Okay, so get the kids a place to play football.
Yeah.
And Rockwood did not have a team at that time, right?
Well, Rockwood did, uh, for about about ten, maybe eight or ten years. I don't know the exact number, but, um, we had to cancel two years, uh, because there wasn't enough kids to play. So after that second year, myself and Mark Bauer, the superintendent, and one other person had initial talks about co-op and that's what we did. And it's been a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our kids.
Yeah. You know what? There may need to be more opportunities like that, as I say, I already know, like my, my, one of my daughters is interested in track, she's going into seventh grade. And now I, I'm, I'm learning she's got to go to Myersdale for that now.
Correct. And, and that's, and that's good because they have the facilities for that. We don't.
Yeah, so at least there's a place where they can go and do it. Somerset, uh, well, the Rockwood kids are training at Somerset if they're swimming.
Correct.
So, yeah, and then I know this past year, we couldn't put a girls' junior high basketball team together, which was disappointing because then it just affects the next level.
Correct.
It just, it's a trickle-up effect, you know, where
Correct.
They're, they missed out on a whole season where you try to put them in the mix next year, whether it's in junior high or, or JV or varsity. And now they're a year behind. And that's, that's frustrating because they don't get a place to go.
And that's what happened with football, you know, those couple of kids or those two years of those kids lost the opportunity that, you know, they'll never get back, but then when we did the co-op, those kids was behind because we had nothing, you know, to get them ready to, for that next level.
Right.
So for the first two to three years, it was a little bit rocky over there, but then, you know, the last few years, and I'll speak on my, my oldest son's behalf. His sophomore to senior year, there was more Rockwood kids that started on our football team than there was Berlin kids.
Yeah.
And, you know, I give that kudos to that staff over there. They are there to win and they don't care what, where at school you're from.
Yeah, yeah, I've heard good things.
Yep.
You know, just from the, you know, I had a nephew that played for, for one of those teams. Uh, neighbor, you know, and they've got great things to say about the coaches over there.
One that was, you know, very well-respected over there.
Yeah, and I liked seeing that. And then the kids seemed to get along too.
Yep.
You know, and that's, that's good to see because that's the way we grew up. It didn't really matter. You went to Somerset, but we hung out.
I was with you guys before I could start driving.
Right.
You know, down with you guys.
Then once we did, yeah, we started driving, everybody had, uh, a CB in their vehicle. Times are different, aren't they?
Well, you're showing our age.
I know, yeah. Hey, I was the CB.
That was before cell phones.
I know, yeah, and that's how you had to communicate.
Correct.
I mean, if you only had one antenna on your truck, yeah, well, you, you, you probably weren't working as hard as the guy that had too.
Right, right.
Yeah, we were, uh, we were sitting on tailgates of trucks drinking milk and milk light. You know, and, and now we're, now we're here sitting in a podcast talking about how you're county commissioner. So funny how times change.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago, I never thought I'd be doing this.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's one of my questions, you know, you, did you see yourself doing this when you were younger?
No.
And what?
Or the school board, you know, I, I hated school. I hate, I wanted so much to get out of there, I hated school.
Yeah.
And I ended up back in there.
Well, and I think being a parent changes things.
It did.
Um, you know, I was talking to, to Joe in the last podcast, he says, you don't know love or you don't know fear until you have kids.
Right.
You know, and there's a lot of truth to that. But, so how did you get involved in the exchange program? And you've done this twice now.
Yeah, our second, our first one was Cody's junior year, so that'd been two years ago, and now Seth's junior year.
Okay.
Lady at church.
Yeah.
I, I call her a used car salesman because she likes to sell stuff. And she's the one that actually talked us into the first one and it was a wonderful experience, you know, we, we had a son from Mexico, he was a good kid, played football here, you know, he did well. Tried wrestling, wrestling wasn't his thing, but, you know, he tried. And then she talks us into a second one.
Yeah. And where's he from?
Germany.
Germany, okay.
Good kid, you know, they they have a whole, you know, it makes you appreciate the things that you have here that they don't have, you know, especially Germany, not so much because they're not I don't want to say third-class country like Mexico, but they, you know, like our Mexican student or son, um, they only had running water in their house once a week. The town would turn the water on once a week and they'd fill their holding tanks up in their house. And that's how they could shower and they only, they only did laundry once a week when they had enough water coming into the house.
And he came here and it rains every day. He's like, I can go outside and shower whenever.
Right, and it was, it was different because he was he was, uh, trying to reuse his clothes because, you know, they didn't wash them as much down there, so he didn't want to, he didn't get dirty. Tried to refold his pants, put them away, we're like, no, wash them. You know, he had a hard time with that.
Yeah, yeah, to get used to and different culture.
Right, yeah, right.
So they want to.
He didn't like the cold.
Yeah, well, I guess.
Because he was here that, he was here the year they got negative forty over Christmas and New Year's and he didn't like that at all.
Yeah. I don't like it either.
Well, I don't either.
And the older I get, the less I like it, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, it's been a cold winter. But we were due from one of these. So if you don't have cold, then it goes immediately to mud.
Right, like it is right now.
Yes, and, you know, you know, they're on your farm.
Oh, yeah.
How.
Before time getting around right now.
Always a challenge, whether it's cold or the mud, uh, and then for three months, it's nice.
Correct, that's about it.
So, um, you, I notice you called him your son. And does that develop over time? Or, you know, do you've just, hey, you're here, you're our son.
Well, I mean, they already are kids, you know, they're in every aspect of your life when they're here and, you know, they're busy twenty-four seven and.
How long are they here then?
So, the R2 that came with, to live with us, um, they both wanted to play football, so we had to bring them about three weeks earlier than school because that's when football camp started. So ours are actually, our two sons come a little bit earlier than most, but normally it's like less than a week before the first day of school. And then ten days after the last day of school, they have to be on a plane going home.
Yeah.
So, you know, that ten, eight months, nine months, whatever it is.
For the school year.
Yeah. Now, there's some exchange programs that are a lot smaller, shorter time window than ours, but ours, you know, through the school year.
Okay. And what impact has that had on your sons?
A good impact, you know, our, our first, our, our, uh, son from Mexico, he him and my oldest son shared a room and they got really close and like they, they still talk just probably about every other day, if not every day.
That's good.
And he actually came home last summer for Cody's graduation.
Okay. And do they share a little bit of their culture with the kids too?
Sure, yeah, they do, they do.
That's cool.
I, I mean, the German culture is similar to ours, uh, it's different, but it's similar, he says, you know, that like most of their language speak, spoken there is, they, they speak in English because of all the tourism. They watch all their movies in English. Uh, because our, our German student says, German movies suck, is what he says, so.
That's funny. And he would see playing sports?
Yeah, he played football and he played basketball. Um, I think, I don't think he's going to do track, he's going to do West Penn soccer.
Okay. Yeah. And my youngest has signed up for soccer. Uh, she, she was the other one that didn't get a, a basketball team put together, you know. My wife tried and a couple of kids came out, couldn't put a team together. It's
It's unfortunate.
Yeah, it is, but it seems to be happening more and more and probably comes and goes in ways, but I, I think overall, the student body is down a little bit.
They are. I don't know what the numbers are exactly now, but they are down a little bit.
Yeah. So you went through the COVID deal while you were on the school board, correct?
Yeah.
And what, what was that like? I mean, obviously the news breaks, things are happening, decisions have to be made. And I guess everybody made a decision based on the information they had at the time.
Correct, we did. Um, when it first happened, you know, everyone had an unsure, you know, decision to make because no one knew what was happening. And I guess this kind of goes into it was a political thing at the time is what a lot of people felt.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, we let the kids and the parents chose, choose what they wanted to do with their kids, whether they want to send them to school with a mask, no mask. You know, and, and myself and the superintendent um, had legal repercussions coming down against us from the governor's office, so, you know, ourselves and one school in Lancaster was the first one to open our school back up.
Yeah, that's awesome. And here you are, volunteer.
Right.
And they're coming down on.
Right, they, they, um, from the governor's office, it came, and I have the letters at home still, um, you know, if a student would have contracted the, the, the virus and taken it home and given it to an elderly individual, their grandparents or whatever, and that person would have passed away. And we, and they could prove that we didn't take precautions at the school, they could have come back on us legally, you know, personally, liability on it.
Wow.
So.
Yeah, and at that point.
Which, which, which in the end it was found that they couldn't do that, but, you know, with them with every, with the uncertainty of everything, they was threatening all that, you know, but.
Yeah, and now looking back, vaccine didn't even stop it.
Right.
So.
It, no.
Yes. Yeah, so.
It, it, it hurt our kids.
Yeah, oh, I can see that.
COVID hurt our kids.
All three of my kids were.
For social, socializations. Drug abuse. You know, just their homes, home lifestyles because there was a lot of things that, you know, happened to kids when they was at home.
Yes.
All day long.
Yeah.
Also, I, I don't want to say so much in our school district because it, and, you know, we have a great administration down there.
Yeah.
But some of the ones in the county, you know, that are less fortunate, it wasn't real good.
Oh, and in general across the country.
Well, yeah.
But, and I always say like our, our county is, is kind of a snapshot into rural America.
Sure, sure.
People here.
We're still beat, I mean, I, I, I'm not taking, you know, I don't want no one to take it extensively, but we're behind the times compared to a lot of rural America.
Yeah, and that's good in the way.
Well, it sure is good. You know, you still, you can still leave your door unlocked here, you know, leave your keys in your car.
Yes.
For the most part.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I grew up that way. Yeah, we went on vacation, you lock your door.
Nope, nope. Nope, because someone's coming to check on it for you.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yeah, I, that's what I love about where we live. I've tried, you know, been a couple of different places, lived in a few different places. And you know what? If you can deal with the weather here, the natural resources that are here, the, the the seasons are, are honestly, they're, they're great. Winter gets a little long, but other than that.
At times.
Yeah, so Rockwood and a school in Lancaster were two of the first to open back up.
Lancaster was the first one, uh, it was Lancaster County, I don't know what school district was, but Lancaster County, and then we was the second one to told the governor's office to pretty much go pound it.
Yeah.
And we opened the school up for our kids.
There's Amish out there leading the way, huh? No, not in the public school system though.
Right.
They, what are what they, they never wore masks.
I don't think. Yeah, I don't think so.
They're immune already, yeah. No, they never got vaccinated for anything anyway.
No.
Anyway, yeah, so that, that made your time as school board, on the school board interesting, I'm sure. And is that all?
Interesting year, uh, yeah, to say the least.
Yeah, well, it is, it was for everybody, you know, even.
You know, and I wasn't the only decision that, you know, we, we at the time had a pretty and we still do, uh, you know, we, we have a good school board there that, you know, was worried about the kids.
Yeah.
First.
It's a conservative bunch.
Right, right.
It seems, well, this area is in general.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I pulled up the voter voter records from the twenty twenty-four election and then.
We're three to one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty, pretty, exactly three to one.
About thirty-four thousand registered Republicans, eleven, about ten thousand eight hundred Democrats. And about six thousand independents.
Yeah, have you heard Scott Pressler?
I have not.
Yeah, he says, this dude, he went around the, the, the state, he goes a couple of other controversial states and just registering voters on the Republican side. And he's, he, he had a lot to do with getting a lot of Amish people in Lancaster County registered Republican.
Okay.
Yeah, because of that outdoor show.
Okay, no, I don't, I never heard him.
Yeah, but, uh, kind of a long, tall, long-haired fellow. Uh, anyway, um, we're like going to, yeah, okay, so you go from school board to county commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
Was that, was that a catalyst for you to go to commissioner? Was it kind of prepare you a little bit for what you're doing to county or?
I mean, the school districts, you, you know, you have to run it. It's a business, you have to run it like a business. Or you're going to go bankrupt, like they did, you know, fifteen years before that.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and I wasn't the sole one, you know, making those decisions, there was none of us on that board.
Yeah, correct.
Um, you know, they, they let me in that chair position to run, you know, run the meetings and, and there's only certain things you, as a board president, you can do on your own. You know, you still have to have a majority vote to do stuff, so it wasn't just me doing it.
Yeah.
Um,
He was kind of leading the way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was I guess they, they, they felt that I was a good enough leader, they looked, you know, looked at what my thoughts and opinions was, but I let everyone voice their opinions and just let everyone know, you know, what could, could happen if we went the other way with, with a decision we, they wanted to do.
Yeah.
Um, but, but in the grand scheme of things, the school district is run on a smaller scale than the county. Just not as much departments. You know, there's, we have uh, I don't know the exact number, I know there's over fifty departments in the county.
Wow. And so, it's a school board meeting. And I'll tie this into the county. There's a private session? Or, or is everything public?
Everything is public except for an executive session.
Okay.
And there's only, you can only, there's only limited things you can talk about in executive session. It's personnel and litigation.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, and now is the county?
Kids, I mean, you know, that too.
Yeah. Is the county the same way?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
Any, any personnel, um, or, or litigation, you know, or solicitor advice or anything like that is, you know, that's the only thing really executive session you can do. Everything is a hundred percent open book.
And any, any resident can come to the meeting?
Correct.
And when are the meetings?
The commissioners meetings?
Yes.
They are every other Tuesday, uh, we most of them are at ten thirty in the morning, but we, uh, since me and Brian got elected, we've taken once a quarter and moved them out into the community at six o'clock in the evenings.
Okay.
Once a month, like, um, so next, I think the next meeting, we're at six o'clock in the boardroom at the county office. And then the next quarter, I think we are boy, you put me on the spot, Tim. I think we're either.
That's all right, we'll get the informa- like, information as we go to the county website.
Yeah, it's on the county website.
And, and all I'll do is I'll put that in the show notes, so if anybody wants to say, hey, I've, I've never been to a meeting, they want to go to a meeting, they can go to the website.
We held three on Mountain County last year, we had good turnout, we had one at township, Conemaugh Township Municipal Building. Um, we had one at, uh, Shanksville Fire Hall. And I don't remember where the third one was. But it was well-received, you know, people that, people that don't normally come, that never have been there, you know, we had new, saw new faces and it was good, it was good.
Yeah. And so, any local taxpayer is affected by the county government, like, so Somerset County residents, you pay your local taxes, that funds the county budget, correct?
Correct. Local government is, is about the only government that touches your everyday life. Uh, every, something aspect of your everyday life.
From the road you drive down.
Well, not the roads.
Well, not the state roads.
Yeah.
Or even.
We don't own, we don't own one, one foot of roadway.
Oh, okay.
But we have seventy-four bridges.
What ways does?
We have seventy-four bridges we own.
Okay. Huh, but no roadways.
No road.
So is that because the, of the, whatever the bridge is going over, is that?
Well, no, apparently this is long before any of our time or our parents' times, um, the county, I guess, took the liability from the townships off the townships or the state back then and, and said, we'll take care of the bridges.
To assume some of the liability.
Right, and now we have extremely too many of them.
All right.
That costs us a lot of money.
Oh, I guarantee it. Um, and there's been some recent upgrades.
Yep, I mean, we've had to close a few here in the last year because it just deteriorating it.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the ones that we've had to close didn't affect any, you know, um, the livelihood of anyone or anyone getting out of their homes, it was just old dirt roads that they cross, it doesn't go anywhere.
Now, are that, so that's just a township road where there's a bridge, county, in the county?
Yeah, there's two, I think we have two that are on state roads that we own. Yeah, there's two, I think we have two that are on state roads that we own. Why, why we own two bridges on state roads, I don't know, but the rest of them are all on township roads.
Okay.
And when I say we, uh, we.
Yeah, right, yeah. Good to know.
Yeah.
So what, um, I'm gonna get ahead of myself. Uh, is this a full-time job for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're elected.
You couldn't, you couldn't do a good job and, and treat it as anything.
Yeah.
More than a full-time job.
And there are three of you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's you, yourself.
Myself, Brian Fufman and Pam Ikis.
Okay. And. Were you all on the ticket?
Yes.
Twenty twenty three, correct?
For twenty three, yes.
Okay.
Um, you know, Brian and I ran as a team, um, for commissioner. Uh, it saved us a lot of money doing it together.
Yeah, cuz I was wondering why that was. You kind of ran together.
We, we put our resources together and put it together, uh, put our names together, you know, the people that Brian knew would get my name associated with him and vice versa.
Yeah.
Plus, it was a cost savings both of us.
And it's creative, and maybe that says something about how you run the government. Yeah, good, that's good.
You know, she ran by herself on a Democrat ticket.
Yes. Is it good that she is on the other side? On the Democratic side to have, is that always the way it is? Or can you have three Republican commissioners?
You can have three of one party, uh, commissioners, you know, Potter County just did it in our election cycle. They had a third Republican do a write-in and they got more votes than Democrats that was on the ticket.
Okay.
So their, their majority, or they're, they're all three Republicans Potter County. But the norm is two of one party, one, one of the other.
Yeah.
You know, and then for, for a long, long time, our county was two Democrats and one Republican.
Right.
You know, that was prior to.
Which is.
That was early, you know, mid two thousand era.
Yeah, well, the Democratic part's changing a little.
Correct, correct.
Is that happening locally, do you think?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, so many Democrats. I don't know any Republicans that went over to be a Democrat. But I know some married Democrats come over to be a Republican.
There was a lot.
You know, even on, on the big stage.
Yep.
And even local people are like, you know, oh, man.
Yeah.
So I think that's.
Couple thousand in the county.
Yeah. That's. And that's something to be said. I think it's just how Trump works. He's able to pull people from both sides and say, hey, you're good at this. Let's put our.
But you have to.
Yeah.
Like, like. And I, I, you know, I'm glad that we had a little bit of, you know, her knowledge with some things, you know, walking in there blind would have been tough.
Yeah.
Um. Especially things that happened before that was ongoing, that was still in the process of happening when we got in there. You know, we would have had no idea what was going on, cuz there was also some change with office staff at the time, right before we got in. You know, we had to hire a new chief clerk and. There was just a lot of change at one time. Without her knowledge of previous, uh, engagements and things, we'd have been pretty lost.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be tough.
Yeah.
Going in.
You know, and we work well together cuz you have to put your, your, uh. Political affiliation, you know, kind of to the side, cuz you're there for one goal, one goal only is, is the county residents.
Yeah.
Regardless of their.
Well, yeah, well, you've got residents on both sides, and like you said, we're three to one. It's not.
Right, I mean, everyone's constituent once you get elected.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know lots of Democrats that I talked to.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know a lot of them, but I know some.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but, uh. Hey, I just, to the tribal mentality, I don't like, I mean, you're a person to me.
Right, oh, I agree with that.
I don't, I don't. I don't hate anybody, you know. You're a, you're a person first.
Right.
And that's why I look at it, and I, even, even at the, at the top of the, very top of the ticket. I've never looked at any of those guys like the, with the, not Obama, not Biden, my goodness, if anything, they need prayer. You know, and all of them, pray for them, pray for this.
Right.
The Lord demands it.
Right.
Pray for your leaders, whether it's, you know, and.
Well, that's what you have to do, you know, we. We're only. Doing what we think is best for everyone, you know, it's all we can do, you know, we're trying, we, we try to take into consideration everyone.
Yeah.
Cuz you have to.
Yeah. What is the budget of Somerset County?
Sixty four million dollars.
Sixty four mil- wow, wow.
We have seventy four thousand residents.
Way to go Somerset County, and, uh, my last guest, uh, state trooper. Told me that the Somerset County is as big as the state of Rhode Island. I didn't know that.
I don't know that, if he, if he says so, I don't know, I, maybe.
Landmass the size of Rhode Island. It's big, and we were talking about the challenges of being a state trooper in a county that size, you know, he could be at one end, and it's a long way to get to the other end of. The northern side. If you're at the southern end, you gotta go to.
You know, if you figure, if, if you're Addison at the, at the Oak Bridge, it's gonna take you a good. Hour to get up to the county line on two nineteen.
That's what he was saying, you know, for, they get a call.
Right.
And they're spread thin and, you know, it's only so many troopers on their own patrol, actually.
Yeah, we won't say how many.
Yeah, but, you know. Yeah, it could take a minute.
Yeah.
That's why you gotta know what you're, you gotta defend yourself. You know, and that's this, that's, that's the state. We, we discussed a little bit about how they're funded. But, so does the county have, did you work with, uh, the sheriff's office, right?
Correct.
Okay. And how, what's that relationship like? So how does?
Good, we, we, oh, so there's other row officers and, and what, what row officer is is an elected official. You know, everyone voted for a sheriff or a register, wills, clerk of courts, um, recorder deeds, treasurer, coroner. Uh, district attorney. Hope I'm not missing any of them, they'll, they'll forgive me.
Yeah.
Uh, but they have their own offices and. You know, we, we all work well together.
Yeah. Um, but that's really the only, the sheriff's office is the only law enforcement office that the county works with?
Probation, they're, they're law enforcement and. Yeah, but is. And you have, we have the county jail.
The county, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, those are correctional officers in there.
Right.
They have to abide by the same rules and regulations as a state penitentiary.
Their county employees.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, but the, the two. That also makes us unique.
Sheriff's deputies are also county employees too.
Yeah, the fact that we have two state prisons.
Right.
It makes our county also unique.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, not too many of them have to, I mean, and that, it hurts us too because, you know, we fight for employees, you know. Um, between the county jail and, and SCI.
Yeah. Do some of the guys that work in the county jail see that as a stepping stone to get to the state prison?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, okay.
But then some, um, we, we've had a few that went into that environment and they didn't like it. They come back.
Yeah.
Cuz they didn't, they just. I, I, I don't know the answer why they didn't like it. They just, they said they didn't like it.
Yeah, oh, I was in. I didn't get taken there. I went voluntarily. I went for criminal justice, uh, right out of high school. I had no idea what I was gonna go. My wife talking, she's just go for something like, all right, so. Signed up for criminal justice, and they gave us a tour, uh, the, uh. State hospital, which is now the.
Laurel Highlands.
Yes. And then we were supposed to go to the new prison. Um, I think Ray Sabina was the superintendent then. Anyway, uh, that, that evening it got canceled for whatever reason, but. Yeah, I just couldn't see myself being a police officer. Grateful for him, love him all to death, you know, thankful for him and, uh, just wasn't in the cards for me.
Right.
Anyway, yeah, so. I don't know, it takes a special person.
Well, it does take a special person.
Work in there. Yeah, so. So we talked a little bit about the budget. So what was it like, I guess, putting, running the campaign, you're like, all right, I'm gonna run for commissioner? Uh, what was that conversation like with the family?
Well, you know, at first. First, I had to make sure, you know, my wife was on board with it.
Yeah.
You know, she supported me a hundred percent, but you know, we sat down for. You know, I started talking to her in. Probably October, November of two thousand twenty two. About this decision, you know, and we talked about it for a while and then left to go for a couple of weeks and come back to it and, you know, and decided. Cuz it affects your whole family, unfortunately, at times it does. Um, you know, and I didn't wanna. Put my wife and kids through any of the political BS, um, and. You know, we, we all agreed as family that, you know, we'd make it work.
Yeah.
So then I made my announcement in January twenty three.
Okay, and you, you kind of teamed up with Brian.
Right.
And said we're gonna do.
And I honestly, when we, when I made my announcement, I didn't know Brian was running also, um. You know, it wasn't until a couple of weeks afterwards that, you know, and I knew Brian cuz he, um. Coached my boys wrestling and his son was one of their football coaches and a wrestling coach, so. When, when we heard each other's running, we were, we were like, hey, you know.
Yeah.
We started talking and that's how we got together.
Yeah, that's, that's creative.
Yeah.
So, and then how long, so you put your name in the hat at what, yeah, it's just like. I didn't know all this was going on, and all of a sudden I start seeing yard signs for Kimball.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good for you, which made sense to me after I knew you as school board president for, for a long time, so.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd have, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't have probably did this if I didn't have some kind of. Background in that a little bit. I mean, it, it's, it's two different elements. I understand that, but it's still the same concept.
Yeah. So. The election obviously went good for you and Brian.
Yeah, I mean, it was a very, very tight primary race for me, I mean, Brian. Brian's name was, you know, cuz he was perthonatory, you know, before he ran for commissioner. So he, uh, he was there elected two years prior too, so his name is already out there already.
So. Um, what's the perthonatory?
Perthonatory.
Perthonatory.
So they take care of all, and I'm sorry, I, I missed them. They're also elected official, um, that office takes care of all the. Like when you file a lawsuit, it goes into there. Anything that goes through the court system gets filed into there at office. Child custodies, you know, PFAs, um.
He has a background in.
Law enforcement. He's retired state trooper.
Okay, okay, so that's.
And he was a resource officer.
Makes sense, okay, great.
So that kind of fit his realm of background?
Uh, do you have to? I guess you're in there in the courthouse, right, is your office?
No, we're in the lower building, the annexed building.
New building.
Yeah, the one beside the jail.
Okay.
It's not new anymore. It's twenty five years old.
I know, I still think of it.
It, it, I call it the new building too, but it's twenty five years old now.
Was in there, Lindsey and I voted early.
Okay.
So we went in, in like in October.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah. Uh, just cuz I was just hearing from some, you know, people that I follow and listen to in the political space, vote early, vote early. So I'm like, ah, why not? And I was surprised to see, uh, you, you can look on, on the voter registration, how many people voted early.
Right.
And it was quite a few.
There was a lot in our county, yeah, they, they're, for a little bit, uh, our election office was overwhelmed.
Yeah.
You know, cuz we had so many at one time.
Yeah. Now, on, uh, nine eleven. This most recent September eleventh. Trump came to the Lake ninety three memorial.
Right.
Along with the other two.
Right.
Then you got to meet Trump?
I did.
How was that?
Uh, very cool, you know, hi- his son Eric was there also. You know, we, we didn't, they had a private ceremony for the families of Lake ninety three, you know, we didn't involve ourselves with that. Um. You know, and, and being on the fire department here in New Centerville. You know, I know firemen at, uh, Shanksville and they invited me over, um, cuz they, they knew he was coming there. So we, I went down and, you know, it, it was very cool experience, you know.
That's where he came to the Shanksville Fire Department?
Yeah.
That was the video that we saw of him walking in.
Yes.
And getting the. Standing ovation.
Yep, that was.
Biden and Kamala walked in with crickets.
Yeah, that was the Shanksville Fire Department. That's actually all true.
Yeah, I believe it. I saw it.
Biden putting the hat on is a hundred percent true. That come from Tony DeLuca or treasurer's phone. He's the one that filmed that.
That's awesome. That was hilarious.
So that, that one is going viral. That was, actually, that happened.
That's in Shanksville Fire Department.
Correct.
Okay, cool.
You know, and hi- him and his son were, you know, were very genuine stand-up people.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Oh, you hear that from everybody that has ever met him.
I, I mean, they're, they're super approachable, you know, they didn't, he, he didn't leave there. Without speaking to everyone that wanted to speak with him.
Cool, and he took pictures with.
Oh, yeah, whoever wanted a picture or speak with him, shake his hand.
Yeah.
He wouldn't leave until he was done.
That's cool. Yeah. Shout out to all the fire department in our area too and in our county.
Right.
And I, I gotta get one of those guys on soon too, so. Yeah, that's neat, and so that happened in September. And obviously he went on to.
Went to President's studio.
Yeah. Let's see, what else I got for you? Okay, and anything other than tax revenue fund the county?
So we have federal grants, we have state grants that come in, um, you know, state. So CYS, I'll use them in a, uh, area of agency, area, area. Aging area of agency, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Tongue twister, um, those two are, are state funded, um, agents, uh, aging office. Is a hundred percent funded back by the state and CYS, we get an eighty percent reimbursement from the state.
Yeah.
So those offices, you know, have state funding come back to us if they pass the budget and, uh, don't freeze anything. But there's also some federal money that come into that too, um, through the CYS office and.
That's children's youth services.
Yeah, children's youth services, um, you know, and then we had also, there's some, um. Some federal funding that comes into the aging office and. You know, the vet- we have veterans office in there, you know, with the, uh, federal funding with that. So there, there is a lot of federal funding and some state funding. But the majority of the money coming in is from tax revenue.
Okay, and so there's somebody in there at the county that's seeking those grants.
Yeah.
Finding out what's available, putting out.
Well, the, the two big ones with the eighty percent reimbursement and then a hundred percent for aging, those are just a continuous from the state, like those are programmed, they already cover. You know, and that, that's already programmed into the state budget.
That every county gets.
Yeah, but for other things, you know, we have. For large federal grants and large state grants, we, we have hired an outside. Grant writer to write these grants because it's just too complex.
Yeah.
For one individual to do.
Okay.
But the smaller grants, you know, ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollar grants, we, we have department heads that will write them grants to get those for us.
Okay, neat.
Yeah, there's roughly four hundred employees in the county.
And that's. That, nothing to do with Somerset Township?
No.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Or the borough or anything like that, yeah, okay. So, four hundred employees, wow.
It's a lot of employees.
It is, yeah.
You know, we also oversee the, the human services aspect of the county, you know, with DBHS and Tableland and things like that.
Okay. The county employees have good benefits?
They do.
Okay.
Yeah, the retirement is very good and their health insurance is very good health insurance.
Yeah, good. What, uh. And I don't know if you guys are, are doing this or if it's part of your role, but do you look, do you, do you do much outlook for the county? Where are we at? What's the future for Somerset County? How do we capitalize on, you know, for not to. Make Somerset great again, you know?
Sure, we have to, you know, we're always.
So what, what, yeah, what, what are you guys doing as far as like outlook? Uh, what, what opportunities do you see out there for Somerset County residents and? Uh, what are the challenges?
Population is a big challenge for here, you know, the younger generation isn't staying. They're, uh, we don't know where they're going. They're not staying, um. We, we, we try to work with all the state, uh, legislation and the federal legislation to try to see. You know, what's out there that, that could be enticing to bring, you know, businesses here to our county, uh, you know, right now. You know, we're, we're a huge tourist attraction, you know, Laurel Highlands, um. So that brings us a lot of revenue to the local businesses here. But the manufacturing jobs that we used to have, we haven't gone any of them back yet, unfortunately.
Yeah, what have we lost, you think, like?
Gilmore's.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we lost Fleetwood.
Those are two big ones.
Yeah, those are two big ones, um. Yeah, those two big ones, um.
And some of the other ones maybe scaled back a little?
Yeah, there were some that scaled back, I know Lice, Tool and Dice scaled back some, uh, Wheeler's has scaled back.
Jane J's is still a big one, right?
Yeah, Jane J, uh, they're still.
A lot of employees out there.
Yeah, I don't know how many they have there, but they have a fair amount of employees. I know at one time it was the hospital in the county was the two largest employer, employers in the county.
Wow.
You know, a lot of the, a lot of the services that we have, the state and the federal government mandate that we have them, but they don't help us pay for them.
Right. The nine-one-one operators operate out, out of the county?
Yeah, so they, their building is directly across the street from the courthouse coming towards Diamond.
Okay, yeah.
It's the old US Bank. Yeah, that's part of the county, you know, aspect.
How many people work in there, you know? Don't mean to put you on the spot, just in general, I'm just curious.
There's.
Cause that's staff twenty-four seven or?
Correct, uh, there's usually three to four people on the shift, you know, and their shifts are, they're really goofy shifts, like they'll. Do a twelve hour shift, then they'll come back and do a four hour and then do a ta- like it's, I don't, I don't understand it, they have it wrote down, they, they like it, that's all that matters.
And they always answer.
Uh, absolutely, that's all, you know, we can ask of them, um, to answer your question, I think there's probably. Close to twenty up there, I guess.
Okay, yeah.
I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I mean, the staff that twenty-four seven, seven days a week, I mean.
Three hundred sixty-five days a year.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a tough job.
Yeah, I mean, that, that. That building in the, in the jail, you know, they do work overtime because they're a twenty-four hour operation.
Yeah, so you say one of the challenges is that young people are leaving Somerset County.
Hmm.
Um, but on the plus side, people are coming here for, uh, do you think that the, the tourism aspect, has that increased?
Oh, yeah, our tourism has definitely increased, you know, we've had, uh, you know, cause we, we get the tourism, um. Five percent hotel tax from hotels and the Airbnbs and stuff the county gets. Excuse me, then we redis- redistribute it to, you know, businesses apply for grants for, uh, advertising and marketing, things like that, so we give it back out. But in the last two years, the tourism, um, it's grown probably fifteen percent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can, I mean, you, you notice it, you know, I, I. One of the houses beside me was in there, was a vacation rental for a long time, it's always busy.
Really?
And there's quite a few around here, and I think where we're at here is a good proximity to state parks, High Powell.
Right.
Yawk Lake.
Right.
Yeah, so there is. A lot of things here, I, I worked with so many guys down in Pittsburgh when I was in the carpenters union. Campers up in this area, visited campgrounds around here a lot, so they're coming in for that. But it's the closest mountain range to, to the flatlanders, I guess, that, that they want to come up here, once you cross into. From, out of Donegal, it up to the, towards Hidden Valley. So I guess talk a little bit just about your role specifically as a, as a county commissioner, what's it? How are you guys?
So the way, the way us three have kinda done it is. I- instead of us all, I mean, we're all involved in everything, but instead of all of us being involved in everything all at one time. We've kinda split our duties up between different parts of the county, you know, like.
Divide and conquer.
Yeah, so, you know, we, all three of us know what's going on, we don't, you, you don't make a decision until a meeting, what's going on, uh, you know, and everyone knows. What's, what's happening, but like I, I'm the go-to for the nine-one-one center. You know, they come, you know, with, if there's problems that we have to take care of, you know, I handle that, um. Brian, you know, takes care of like all, all the law enforcement stuff in the county and the jail. Um, you know, I, I'm liaison for the, uh, aging center. You know, and Pam takes care of, you know, the hu- human services aspect of the county and CYS, so, you know, we kinda, I, I don't wanna say take care of it, but you know, like. When there's problems or, or things or things that they need to tell us, that's who they go to and then us three tell each other what, what's happening.
Okay. And then.
So it doesn't overwhelm, you know, it doesn't overwhelm you all at one time.
It makes sense, you're deli-.
Right.
You've all delegated in some way.
Right.
Yeah, now, do the, uh, to s- to set the budget, does that happen?
We start that process in September.
Okay.
Like the departments will get, um, all their wants and needs, uh, they, and their asks, they put it all together. Um, in September, send it to us, and we have to, October and part of November, we have it, we sit down. Um, you know. Quite a few hours, I don't know the exact hours, but a long time.
Yeah.
You know, we have to have a public display for. Two weeks, I think it is, you know, and then we have to vote on it before the end of the year.
Okay.
You know, e- each department kinda puts their budgets together, what the, what, what they need and what they want. Sometimes they don't get what they want because it's just.
The commissioner is the final say?
Correct.
On approvals for, yeah, for change.
Correct.
Yeah.
Even if someone has it in their budget, um, any, any cost over five hundred dollars, a commissioner has to sign off on a PO. So it kinda check and balance sort of thing.
Okay. Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah. And, and our department heads are really, really good at, at watching the money. Cause they're also residents here, they don't wanna spend more than they have to.
Well, right, and I guess, I mean, when you look at what's going on today with. Department of Government Efficiency, uh, you know, how long is it before state and local government adopt? Something like that.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying every, obviously the bigger it is, the more potential for there to be that type of, uh, waste or abuse. Um, but I mean, man, I certainly would welcome it into state government.
Right, well, I, I mean. To the contrary of what people do think of local. There's not much wiggle room in our budget, I mean, we're not, there's no waste, no really waste at all in there, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Down to the penny.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's good. Because you've only, you've only got so much and, and the smaller the organization. I would say much harder it would be to obviously hide and.
Sure.
There's no Somerset aid.
Yeah, no. Your jail, our jail, you know, costs us a pound of money a year, you know, it's about a six and a half million dollar budget on that jail.
Is that the biggest line item in?
Yeah, for, the jail's the biggest budget, s- single budget, I should say.
How many?
You know, and then of course we have, you know, CYS and aging and things like that, you know, cause aging's budget is included in ours, even though we don't. Pay that, you know, it's reimbursed, but if the state and the eighty percent of CYS, if they would, if the state would. Freeze their budget and not pay us, we have to cover that money until we get reimbursed.
And what do they do, the area agency on aging, they're, is that Meals on Wheels, is that?
Well, no, Meals on Wheels is a different thing, they, they have, yeah, Meals on Wheels is, is not a county affiliation. Um, but they do have a, a meal delivery service through area of agency.
Okay.
They are, uh, they are an agency to take care of our elderly generation. You know, to help them with their bills and, and make sure they have wellness checks and, you know, get, can get to their doctor's appointments and things like that. And kind of if someone, you know, if you call them and say, hey, I think my neighbor over here, you know, is being abused by his kids or something.
Yeah.
They would send someone to check on him, you know, they're, they're kinda like. And I don't wanna offend anyone, but it, it's kinda like, uh, the CYS for the elderly.
Yeah, right, I got you, yeah.
And, and, and it's not that, but it, to give that a little bit of a dumbed down version.
Yeah, it's a shame that, that it's needed, but it is needed and I'm glad it's there, I guess.
There, there's a lot of, there's a lot of elderly people in this county that are too proud to ask for that service.
Yeah.
You know, and it's there and, and I hope they would take advantage of it.
Yeah, yeah. They funded it for a long time, you know, so. Yeah, if it's there, anybody needs it, look it up.
Yeah.
Or we'll get you hooked up.
They do a great job down there.
Yeah, okay, that's good, um, so, are you, uh? You kinda already answered this, I said, are you doing what you thought you would be doing whenever you were younger?
No, not even remotely close.
It's, yeah, okay, so what did you think you were gonna be?
Honestly, I didn't know, I didn't even know what I wanna do till after graduate, I just, you know, when I, when I graduated, got my CDLS.
Yeah, amen, I still don't know, man.
Yeah.
You know what, I'm interested in a lot of stuff, which is why I think this suits me, uh, cause I'll never get to do it all.
Right.
Uh, but I can sit and talk to somebody who does something I'm interested in, I guess, you know.
I mean, I, I made a great living driving truck, you know, my, me and my wife and, you know, we've done well for ourselves on. You know, I was, didn't graduate college or anything, you know, just high school graduate, did alright.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, hey, truck drivers.
Worked their butts off.
That's such a necessary occupation, I mean, and they, they got a lot of control.
Hmm.
We've seen that, you know?
Yep.
Um, what happened in Canada and.
Right.
You know, all it takes is a few of them to say, yeah, we're not coming to your city, you know, um, but. Yeah, I just, there's so, there's so many things, and there's opportu- there's so many opportunities in our, in, within our county. Obviously agriculture is a big part of our.
Agriculture is our number one, you know, business in, in terms of county.
There, still. Either dairy farming or beef farming.
Yeah, just ag- agriculture in, in general.
Yeah. Lot of crop farming also.
Right. Yeah, it's kinda all lumped in the one, when you look at the statistics of everything that they have drilled up, it's agriculture is just all lumped one between dairy, beef, pigs.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything.
Is it, is the VOTEC school part of the county, how is that?
Yeah, so, it's, well, no, no, it's not part of the county at all.
Okay.
It's part of the school districts, but it's not part of the county.
It's not funded by the county.
No, not at all. Now, we work with them a lot, you know, cause we. I'm a big, um, supporter of trade school.
Yeah.
You know, cause without those jobs, the world's gonna stop.
Oh, yeah, it's a hu- it's a catalyst for somebody that's interested in that, and it's a, it's a need now, obviously.
I mean, you're always gonna need electrician, you're always gonna need a plumber, you're always gonna need a carpenter, a welder.
Yeah, nurse.
Nurse, yeah.
Food sir, yeah, um, there's a lot, I went to VOTEC, did machine shop and welding.
Right.
And, you know, I, I worked in both of those for a little while, you know, and, and it's a, it's a skill that I'll always have, it's always fall back on.
You can make a great living with a skilled job.
Mm-hmm, yeah, if you're, you're a kid who wants to hustle and get a.
Right.
You know, you, you go to VOTEC and then wanna go to a tech school and further that education in one of those fields, you're a commodity.
Right. Uh, you know, my son, he graduated from up there with, you know, his electrical degree.
Okay.
I mean, he decided to go to college to pursue, you know, criminology, but, you know, he has an electrical degree out of VOTEC.
Yeah.
He loved it.
Yeah, and it's just a, it's just a valuable skill to have.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, you wanna be a homeowner, I mean, to know your way around your electrical systems.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's always, yeah, good, good for, so they're funded by each school district.
Right, the, each sending school, um, contributes to that budget up there.
Yeah, okay.
And those teachers are paid through that money is, is sent up there, but they, they average, so. Their salaries is a formula, um, I don't remember the formula now, but. It's a certain percentage of whatever the total is of all the sending schools and they divide it by X number, I don't know what the number is anymore.
Yeah, okay. Anything else you wanna cover from the commissioner's side that we, that we missed?
No.
Tried to have some good, you know, uh, oh, yeah, one thing I, I'm gonna put up there, the county website in the show notes. Um, I think it's great that you guys do a meeting out in the community. Where we can go and, you know, attend.
Yeah.
In the evening, cause it's, it's obviously hard for a lot of people to get there at ten thirty on a.
Right.
On a weekday.
We're having one in Confluence, that's where the other one is this year.
Okay, do you know when that is?
I don't.
It'll be on the website, it's on the schedule?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look that up, we'll post that in the show notes, um.
Over the summer, my, well, no, I, I should say, we're keeping a one night meeting here in the spring and March at the county building for weather purposes, so, you know. Uh, and then up until third or fourth quarter, you know, we'll be back.
Otherwise, meetings are ten o'clock.
Ten thirty, every other Tuesday.
Every other Tuesday in the boardroom.
Yes.
In the annexed.
Annexed building, fifth floor.
All right. Um, what would you tell your eighteen-year-old self? You probably, it's probably shouldn't be too far away, cause you've got two kids in that age.
Yeah, um.
But it may be different what you're telling them.
I, I guess, anything's possible.
Yeah.
You know, I never, never in a million years and, you know, even teachers that I had in school, uh. Come up and shake their head and they said, never would've thought this, but congratulations, proud of you.
Yeah, well, we are too, I appreciate you doing this.
I've known you a long time, Tim.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm glad that you're in there and that, uh, you guys have taken a, a, a good approach to the way that. You guys are spending the taxpayers and your money and, um, I'm, I've learned a lot, I, I'm interested in learning more.
Well.
You know.
Reach out.
And I think it's something that, uh, I pay a lot of attention to politics on a bigger scale.
Sure.
But, and sometimes local can get lost in that mix, but it shouldn't, it really shouldn't, because like you said, it affects your day to day.